Yes. Yes, we have form, President.
Good evening, Peralta community. Apologies for being a bit late. I feel like I'm doing that every time we have a board meeting, but thank you for your patience. Let's call the meeting to order at six ten. Four point two pledge of allegiance. Dr. Jackson, would you like to? Okay, do you want me to give you a second? Are you good? Okay. All right, pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. States of the United States, America. To the public. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's go to four point three roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino. Trustee Whitrow.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Handy.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan. Trustee Delphine Polk.
Here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries.
Yes, here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Four point four affirmation of the statement of cooperation. As per usual, the Peralta Board, I will read the statement of cooperation. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in community college leadership. And to lead by example for our Peralta Colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda item, but in summary, we have committed to three things. Build trust and seek to understand each other. Number two, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols. And number three, model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Four point five report of action taken in closed session. Vice President Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Closed session announcements.
Yes, we have one. On a motion by President Reese and second by trustee Handy, the board voted four to zero to reject claim number seven, three, five, five, two, one. Trustees Whitrow, Handy, Delphine Polk, and Reese voting yes. Trustees Gonzalez Ewan and trustee Jenkins were absent. That is all I have, President Reese.
Thank you for that. Four point six approval of the agenda. And thank you. Second.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. And roll call.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino. Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Reese.
Thank you, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I'd like to take a executive privilege at this particular moment and just make the chancellor and I would like to make two announcements. One is that recently several requests have been received regarding the naming of rooms, buildings, and facilities. As many of you may know, there was a process put forward and recently completed by Laney College Classified Senate. To dedicate their lounge and to name it in, to name it Renee Rivas Classified Senate Lounge. Thank you for that because that's fantastic. Board policy and administrative procedures six, six, twenty govern this process. Individuals with requests are encouraged to review both the policy and procedure and submit the required information. The chancellor and or the board of trustees will act upon submitted proposals depending on the specific request. The board will convene a special meeting on Monday, November twenty eighth at four P M. To consider recent requests. The agenda for that special meeting will comply with the Brown Act and will be published. With ample time so that all are able to see what the agenda item is. We will receive any public comment on the naming of district facilities or other pertinent items at this special meeting. Again, the meeting is scheduled for Monday, November twenty eighth at four P M. And that will be a virtual meeting. Chancellor Jackson.
Thank you, President Reese. I did have a few comments before we move into the agenda. I became aware today that the Laney College Academic Senate passed a resolution regarding an item that is appearing before the board today, and I wanted to speak to that item. I think there's a bit of confusion regarding that item. And I just wanted to bring that to light before we we move forward. One of the recommendations is to move forward with the turf, not only at Merritt College, which is, I believe, item eight point two, but also eight point one. But also to move forward with the project, a similar project at Laney College, eight point two. Okay. All right. Based upon that, the recommendation was to not move forward with that item, and I wanted to address that. As part of what we do at the district office, we look at multiple projects. Not in a sequential manner, but at the same time. So the project that is involving the Laney College campus. Has been moving forward at the same time as other projects on the campus. Primarily the cup project, which has to do with the boilers and has to do with the chillers. That project has had several starts and stops. And I'll just go through a few of them. One of them is that. We found out East Bay Med had a problem and. Basically, we had some pipes that were destroyed. As we went through and looked at those pipes, we found that we were on an earthquake fault. And so we had to do a full secret environmental scan. And to go through and provide that information to DSA. As they were looking through that information, they said, oh, you have four projects dating back twenty five years. That you need to get certified. It had to do with ADA compliance. So we had to go back twenty five years, present that and to move forward. The second item that they said is, oh, because you're moving the building, you have to submit a new ADA pathway. And so we had to go back and provide that. All of those documents have been submitted to DSA. DSA has not provided approval of those yet. The last thing in which is on the agenda tonight for approval, I believe, is item eight point six. Has to do with the hiring of a fire investigator. Because it was the third thing that DSA said we had to do is that we have to provide certification. Of our fire and our fire extinguishers. So with the approval of that tonight, we will move forward. In the meantime, we've contacted DSA to try to get a preliminary or provisional approval. To move forward, the boiler is sitting in the field. In the yard of the vendor. But we cannot move forward without approval from DSA to install that. I spoke to this to the district academic, not the academic senate, but district administrators this morning. Because we've done everything we're supposed to do, but unfortunately it's taken time. So it isn't a matter of priorities. I wanted to put that out in the public forum. It's a matter of the problems that we've had with starts and stops of projects. And that one project should not be penalized if it's been able to move forward. Because we do multiple projects at the same time. We're working with Milvia, with Kitchen. We're working with Swinerton over at Laney. And we had another vendor was working over at College Valameda, and they were all going on at the same time. So. Just wanted to put that out in the public forum. Thank you very much for that point of privilege.
Thank you, Chancellor Jackson. Let's move on to four point seven approval of the minutes. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Delphine Polk. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Latino. Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Four point eight associated student government reports. Do we have any student leaders in the room?
We do. We can start with. Simone Thompson from COA. Are you here?
Yes, sorry, give me. Hello.
Hi.
Hello. I'm the VP of Operations for College of Alameda Student Government. And I'm just catching up on the last few events we had. Just know that for our president, she's not here right now, but Benteke Myers has been presenting a lot of conferences, just to bring back to COA what we've been hearing. And for what she's been participating in, we've been in the vision and strategy meeting in October twenty seventh to twenty eighth. A few CCC SAA meetings as well as the region three meeting for the SSCCC on November eleventh. And there's also, what call it? District event in November tenth that they helped out with as well, which was, what call it, last Thursday, believe we all went to it. Besides that, we've also had some collaborations with the wellness program in our school. Such as the meeting greet with the mental health counselors that we had in November second. Which was on campus for students to come by and stop by and talk to everyone so they knew who could call on for help and ask them like personal questions with everyone else. But besides that, the Wellness Service also collaborated with us for another event that was just today, which was, oh, what call it? It was like a little fall activity, which basically gave out a lot of calming art activities, as well as help people share their gratitude and put on the wall for the school campus. That way to help bring students in as well as just share what their thoughts and everything. But. Also have. A wellness center's Dean Duke, who came by during the last meeting and shared that the school's planning to add in telehealth or at least collaborate with telehealth in our campus. So students will have more accessible and affordable, what called health support as well. And soon, last thing I want to mention for everyone was that S. Col will be planning a few things. But the one that we wanted to bring up is that starting, well, we're currently making plans to start a cafe on campus to help bring in more besides the Tasty Tuesday events. That'll be offered for students of hopefully late December. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Samyam.
Next, we would have Mazin Said from Berkeley City College.
Hi. The ASBCC interviewed and elected four new ASBCC members. The ASBCC also funded. A new printer and a new microwave for the student lounge. We've also been funding a lot of club activities such as foods for meetings and events, covering membership costs for clubs. And then also, as the. I've also attended the IPAR meeting that took place at BCC last week. And attended the academic senate that took, took place earlier this month. And also attended the S. S. C. delegate meeting that happened last Friday. ASBCC is also funding a holiday meal that. Holiday meal event in collaboration with the PTK BSU and the Basic Needs to Provide Holiday Meals for Students next week. And then also last week. Yeah, I believe last week ASBCC also funded efforts for civil engagements to increase student voting. We had ASBCC members as well as student ambassadors on campus to support with the separate. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great to hear. Thank you, Mazin.
Next, we have student trustee Lisa Hogan from Merritt.
No, I don't have anything to report right now.
Okay. Then we have Amola Adalagbi for Laney. It looks like she's got, got their hands up. Hold on one moment. I'm going to move them as a panelist. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amola Latulagwe. I'm representing Laney College. So the Associate Students of Laney College as fourteen council members. And we have three open positions at this time. We've had fifteen ALS LC weekly meetings, and the first one was on July twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty two. There was an active shooter training on eleven fifteen, twenty twenty two, which was today. This was initiated by the ALS LC student leaders. In conjunction with Dr. Amy Marshall and conducted by Dr. Tim Thomas. And secondly, the person, the Office of President Rudy Besikov. As meet available, the President's Office Emergency scholarship fund. To all students that are experiencing extreme financial hardships. So ALS LC leaders have actually helped in. to build upon the strengths of BCC Classified Professionals. The second report comes from the Merritt College Classified Senate. The Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Resources Team's second visit was held on November eighth. The PRT team met with the Merritt Classified Senate and administrative leadership to further discuss the menu of options for classified professional development that the PRT team provided based on their observations from their first visit with us. Merritt has formed an IEPI PRT writing group whose charge is to review the menu of options provided, identify specific areas of focus for Merritt Classifieds as it pertains to classified professional development, and develop an institutional innovation and effectiveness plan. We would like to thank all Merritt Classified Professionals that participated and provided vital input during the PRT team visits and campus surveys. We are optimistic that with continued efforts, classified professional development will no longer be an afterthought, but will become an institutionalized necessity that will provide more than just people soft training, but effectively invest into the holistic development of classified professionals through mentorship opportunities, promoting educational investments for employees, career pathways, leadership development, and more. Investing into the holistic development of all classifieds will sustain and possibly increase employee retention and productivity and make Proust a more desirable place to work as a whole. In conclusion, we would like to end this report with a quote from Arthur Simon Sinek. "The responsibility of a company is to serve the customer. The responsibility of leadership is to serve their people so that their people may better serve the customer. If leaders fail to serve their people first, both customer and company will suffer." The third report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. The Renee Rivas Classified Senate Lounge Dedication took place on Tuesday, November first. His family was in attendance and assisted in the ribbon cutting. The ceremony was a two-part event with words of remembrance of Renee from his colleagues and family with the ribbon cutting event shortly after. The Renee Rivas Classified Senate Scholarship Kickoff Celebration will take place on Wednesday, January eighteenth, his sixty-fourth birthday. Please be on the lookout for more information. Also, it is with deep sadness that we report on the transition of another classified professional, Carlos Ferrer, an employee for over twenty years, unexpectedly passed away on Thursday, November third. Carlos was an avid Comic-Con fan and a former volleyball coach. The Laney Classified Senate asked that you keep his family in continued prayer. Thank you to all the classified professionals, custodial team, culinary team, and student workers who assisted in the planning, setup, and breakdown for last week's charrette at Laney College. It was great meeting other classified professionals from the other campuses and the district. And lastly, Laney College Classified Professionals proudly presents the fifth annual Book and Educational Toy Drive. While you are out shopping and taking advantage of all the wonderful sales this season, please think of those who may be less fortunate and pick up a new book and/or educational toy for the children at the Laney Children's Center. All new books and educational toys should be gender neutral and should range in ages between two and five years old. Please drop off your donations or items to Ms. Hope Lane on the eighth floor of the Laney Tower Building, Room T eight thirteen, no later than Monday, December twelfth. Ms. Lane's email is hlane@proust.edu. That is the end of the campus reports, and thank you for your continued support of the Proust Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence, for that. And we will close the meeting in honor of Mr. Ferrer. Move on.
Thank you.
Of course, let's move on to the next item, four point nine, four point ten, District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, President Reese and Chancellor Jackson, members of the Board of Trustees and guests. As you heard at the last board meeting, one of our fellow instructors over at Merritt had passed away, Jennifer Biffa. And today at our District Academic Senate Meeting, we did a resolution in honor of her. She was a pretty long-serving district academic senator as well as a Merritt College Senator. And she served diligently and faithfully on a number of CE committees, notably at Merritt and at the district. And so we greatly are missing her, and we wanted to make sure that we provided that resolution that we will be forwarding. On other notes, there seems to be a lot of legislation. I am assuming the trustees, as they've gone to their meetings, the CEOs to theirs, and the VPIs and VPSs to their fall meetings. Everybody has been seeing the merit of legislation that has been directed towards community college and all of the additional work that we have to do. And certainly at our state plenary meeting, we also heard those ones. And so part of what I know we have to do is is a long list of stuff as we go forward. I wanted to commend the chancellor and everybody who helped organize the charrette. It was very informative. As I said in two of those meetings, I recognize that we could do so much more with our partners, whether it's the partners at the area school districts or the adult ed or our industry partners. And I think that particularly our CE have been doing wonderful jobs doing some of their work. But yes, we could even do better. I didn't realize that the high schools all had career pathways. And since we have our own guided pathways, I think we really need to see how we could begin lining those up and helping to facilitate those students to our campuses in a much better way than what we're doing now. And the fact that Oakland Unified actually has everybody filling out the applications itself. What kinds of activities are we doing before the students fill those out? And then what are we doing afterwards? Somehow, we need to better connect these things. I say all of this because I see a lot of opportunity that was presented at the charrette. But what I don't see is our own opportunities to meet those issues. Because unfortunately, as many of you know, this past year, our FTES was only eleven thousand seven hundred. And that is low. For those of you who don't recognize, FTES is what we use in terms of how we get our monies from the state. And when you talk about eleven thousand seven hundred, you begin to see how daunting of a task it is to get back where we were five years ago or six years ago. And more importantly, the demographics of our area has changed. And as the Oakland Unified and the other districts become smaller in terms of the numbers, we have to be better in terms of getting our students, and we are nowhere near the kinds of things we probably need to do, which then require resources to do those. And part of the concern I have is that if we are projecting our FTS for next year, can we really justify the FTS at eleven thousand seven hundred? I want everybody to note that a small college is basically ten thousand FTS, right? Or below. And our whole district, including four colleges, one medium and the other ones a little bit smaller than that would normally be much more robust than that. And so if you look at the fact that literally one small college could hold all of our FTES, you have to pause and take a breath and say, ah, what are we doing to address this, given that we've heard already from the charrette from people? And now we're looking at next year's estimated FTF. What do we need? It really behooves us to begin to look at and to intentionally begin to promote and put resources towards those places where we can do more, whether it's dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, whether it is making more entrees into our area schools so that we can help facilitate these students coming into our CE and transfer courses. I say all of this, and I know that we do it to a degree, but we have to become better at it, and then resources need to be devoted towards that. And unfortunately, that's not being done. So I want everybody to really pause and think about this eleven thousand seven hundred. I want folks to think about how do we grow that? How do we grow our dual enrollment? If you don't create more courses, our dual enrollment has gone down. If we haven't put in resources to that, how are we going to grow it? So as we are discussing and coming up with the estimates for next year's FTF, and we're going to put it into our budget allocation process for spring, I really want people to critically look at how are we going to do that unless we make investments? Whether or not we make investments in FTF in order to increase our dual enrollment or some other area, or whether or not we become more effective in terms of how do we advertise? How do we promote? How do we do all of the things we need? Because we do these three-year averages and we're dumping this wonderful fall success that we had in with two of the worst years because of the pandemic and come up with a three-year average. It's going to be probably another five years before we could incrementally get somewhere, even on a positive scale, coming up from that eleven seven hundred. And so we have to be much more intentional than what we have been experiencing. And I don't know how to affect this change because we can't do less than what we have right now. Or else we might as well start looking at, why do we have four colleges? What we need to do is to be much more strategic and much more intentional when we start to look at these. And so I urge the Board of Trustees, I urge the chancellor, I urge all of the folks who are going to be looking at these issues to really look at, how do you cope this estimate with the kinds of things we need to do around it that will support us to continue to move forward with our FTES as well as our efforts to increase our bottom line, which is our fiscal help. So I can't say it enough. I hope you guys are hearing it. I hope that the chancellor and the board will critically look at if your facilities are not being maintained effectively, and this is what the chancellor was talking about. Yes, we know that there's problems with trying to get the women's bathroom that's been a problem for the last ten years fixed. We know that. What we are concerned with is even the monies that are today for the fire hygiene or the fire alarm, that issue board members here remember was, what was that, a year and a half ago, two years ago, where we spent, what was it? A million point five on trying to get those done? It's a similar issue. I don't know if it's the same issue, but why hasn't our Department of General Services? That's a given that that should have been monitored and dealt with, right? And yet, we're at this ninth hour again where the state can't do something because we have a problem with our fire hydrants or our fire alarms. And that's something that we just had less than, what is it, two years ago? So the point I guess I'm making is that there's a long list of stuff that need to be done at Laney. And we need to do a number of them. And the point is, is that they're not being done, and there's not a good effective process by which these are getting done. So you have faculty who are getting extremely frustrated. You have classified who are getting extremely frustrated. And there needs to be a way of addressing those things because again, how do we bring in students without having the facilities we need? So I'll stop it there, but there are many, many issues that need to be addressed, and we really need to have some leadership in order to make these things turn around. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Donald, let's go to four point eleven, Vice President Delphine Polk. I'm going to hand this over to you. Or Madam Clerk, Madam Board Clerk, will you be taking care of public communication?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sasha. No problem. All those that have any public comment they would like to make, please raise your hand. At the moment, I have nine people as attendees that are ready for public comments. President Reese, so I will move over Mary Bassett. And you will have three minutes to speak once I move you over.
Hi. Thank you all for taking the time today to listen to our public comments. I appreciate those specific comments regarding and specifically what needs to be addressed at the college. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Facilities Planning Committee at Laney College as the co-chair. In our process on the committee, we go through a resource prioritization based on program reviews that are submitted annually by programs and departments throughout the college. This process is very important to create equity and transparency through the shared governance system. Also, it aids in accreditation in terms of how those program reviews function on that level. There have been recent approvals of certain projects that are far down on our resource prioritization. And we had some questions regarding the shared governance process, how certain projects are approved, specifically concerns around health and safety of our students, faculty, and staff at the college. There are projects that have been slated for that have been approved and slated for work for years. With those postponements, costs of those projects only increase exponentially annually and therefore become financially unattainable. and therefore become financially unattainable and are then put on further hold. Many of these projects are funded through Measure A and Measure G, as well as local funds. Um, and so we are, we, we are requesting, um, input from the board on the process of resource prioritization, how those decisions are made, specifically how certain projects can seemingly, uh, sort of bypass the shared government, governance process. Uh, specifically when, when certain projects are higher on the list, um, such as the locker room that was noted just previously at Laney College, which proved to be a Title IX issue. Uh, the Student Center, which is where many of our, um, students suffering food scarcity and housing scarcity, find resources. It currently poses a great hazard, um, and risk to students who enter that space. Um, it also deters students from feeling as though they are supported on campus. Thank you for your time.
Next we have Jennifer Shnaski.
Hi, good evening. Um, I will try to keep my comments brief. I wanted to sort of jump on some of the statements that Donald was making in his comments. I wanted to actually compliment the district on a meeting that I attended, uh, yesterday with, uh, Nate Jones, Deanna Bajrami and Steph Droger, uh, with some other faculty members, talking about a new strategy for enrollment. Um, the eleven thousand number that Donald cited, those are our resident FTS. So it's important to note that that's not our full FTS count. Um, but obviously we do have an enrollment crisis and continuing to do things the way that we've done them year after year, um, is not working. And so I really hope that the meeting that was had yesterday is the start of a real collaboration and a change in the way that we allocate and budget for our classes. First and foremost, we are an educational institution and our jobs are to provide instruction, um, certificates, transferability, um, and education to our community. So I hope that that stays at the front. I also want to, um, jump on the, um, comments of the last speaker and really, um, make sure that the Board is doing their full due diligence on which projects get prioritized. Time and time again, certain people with certain relationships and certain, um, positions, uh, take resources away from the community that needs it most. So please, um, look at these, look at these projects hard and closely and, um, fully. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Next we have Leslie Blackie. And Alani Gassis has ceded her time to them.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, greetings, President Reese, Chancellor Jackson, District Leadership and members of the community. My name is Leslie Blakey and I'm the Laney College Faculty Senate President. I am here tonight to speak to you about some recurring themes that are discussed in our Senate, planning, consultation and communication. Our district leadership is accountable to the community when it comes to these matters and it is disappointing that when we do speak up, whether it's because we experience a lack of consultation, we see a lack of planning or we have not been communicated with, we are quickly cast off as making personal attacks or ad hominem attacks. Our envious Laney College Senate is engaged with many issues as well as representing our respective educational areas. In a democracy, the system which our participatory governance procedures are rooted in, there is robust input and deliberation, which are signs of a healthy functional commitment to the people. Planning, consultation and communication are part of democracy. These themes continue to come up for a reason. The things are overwhelmingly not occurring and faculty are not being heard or included. Our Senate has called out two recent issues. The first is the urgent need for DGS to support Laney facilities, which you have been hearing about tonight, that has been highlighted with the agendizing of a facilities project that our college leadership did not know about. The prioritization occurred while our classrooms don't have heat and we are still struggling with a faulty fire alarm system that has put our major facilities projects on hold with the Department of State Architecture. Most shockingly, the Title IX complaint-induced women's locker room renovation project, which was approved by this Board in March twenty twenty-one, has not begun. How can we teach about women's rights when our female athletes are still struggling for equality? The second item I'm bringing to your attention is the censure of our District Public Safety Director, which the Senate voted on today. Before anyone rushes to characterize this as some kind of personal attack, the Senate's censure resolution was very clear. The faculty do not believe there has been adequate planning, consultation and communication around public safety related to specific issues on campus. We do not feel safe. A recent active shooter training underscored this lack of planning and we encourage you to watch it. We want to work with leadership, above all, to make things better for the students we serve. But in order to do that, we have to be heard. Our voices and our processes must be respected because last-minute emails, performance inclusion and excuses for those who are not serving our students do not support our educational community. The processes we've developed, the prioritizations we have developed are part of the accreditation process and accreditation is necessary for us to continue to educate our students. Thank you for your time.
Next we have Alexander Hernanis.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, thank you, President Rudy and the Board and the Chancellor for approving the track and field replacement and for having me speak tonight. It is an awesome feeling to see our students enjoy the facilities that our school has to offer. I come to you tonight as a Laney alumni. I graduated from Laney in two thousand and nine and have always shared my pride in our school. Laney College played a huge role in who I am today. Providing our school with the new track and field is not only a win for our student athletes, but also for our community who utilizes the facility. Over many years, the track and field has had its wear and tear. This has become a safety issue and our students at Laney deserve the best. I've seen other facilities at other schools and, uh, there doesn't seem to be any safety concerns there. I am currently an athletic director in Hayward and have seen the students reap the rewards of a new track and field. They feel valued and the community always shares that with me. They have always shared that, uh, they are glad the students have this and that they deserve it. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak and I am happy to see our leaders get back to a place that I once played, to a place I once called home. I use my time. Thank you.
Next we have John Sullivan.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I would like to formally, uh, address the, the Board, um, regarding the charrette last week. Um, I did, uh, attend that, um, charrette despite, um, many students and if not all students, um, were not properly, um, informed and involved in that charrette. And I would like that to be reflected within the minutes, um, within this meeting. Um, and because of that, um, the, the decisions that came from the charrette and the, um, next steps, um, need to, need to properly involve students. Um, because this entire education master plan is about students. Um, and when we talk about equity, equity is not achieved without involving students. Everything that we're doing here tonight, everything that is happening within, um, these meetings involve students. And so we need to be heard and included in all of these decisions properly. Um, and I think one thing that directly reflects, um, my sentiment is that students at the charrette, um, that are students of Laney College were turned away from the very expensive, uh, lunch that was offered to charrette members, which I think that there's a lot of irony in that and, um, they were directed towards the bag lunches that were handed out in our normal student cafeteria. Um, and I would like to inform everyone that students are taking steps to have, uh, an information session on the education master plan and, um, and the direction that the students would like to take on this matter. Thank you.
Next we have Carl Silbach. You're on mute.
You'd think I would know this, uh, by now, but greetings, uh, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, and thank you for allowing me to speak, uh, in this forum. I have brought to my attention, I, I am the Department Chair of Carpentry also. I co-chair the CTE Facilities Committee. I have a large, uh, curriculum aspect related to health and safety as the high-performance building and understanding how we can create an environment of, of really comfort for our, not only ourselves at home, but at our, you know, community college. And for, almost seems like ever, that has been far from the case. And it's really difficult and challenging to explain to students like, okay, these are the parameters which we should shoot for. And by the way, could you close the door because they're spray, spraying down outside our, our department? And all of you have, because of the negative pressure due to the ineffectiveness of mechanical, uh, systems created, it, it literally just gets sucked into our classroom. And this has been going on for years, um, much less of, you know, electrical problems. Everybody knows about the heating and cooling issues. And how, how much money did canceling one day of classes in September have? But the priorities, I think, are totally misplaced. We have a large, uh, community that really seats us out and we've been, Carpentry and many CTEs have been holding the flag high, having classes, really engaging students during, throughout this and maintaining the best we could with as little as we were supported. Engineers are rarely anywhere. You, you can't even get lighting. You know, it takes a year to get lighting turned on, yet certain projects, like what's on the agenda tonight, without the priorities that many others that people have spoken, the Student Center, the Women's Locker Rooms, Heating and Cooling, on and on, how, how does this happen? I, I, it's, could somebody please explain it to me? Where's the shared governance process? Um, if this is an equitable and transparent process, um, has it been redefined? And I didn't hear about it because it's really frustrating and you, you'll hear it in my voice because I hear it from all my colleagues and everybody just shrugs, uh, it's Laney, right? And that is unacceptable. And so I really would ask the Board, come by, see what we're talking about. I'm happy to explain. I, I think we, we have to do better. And I think you opened up this meeting about building trust and collegiality. I, how, how can we help to, to promote that? It really, I, I'm so proud when I speak of Laney to all my friends, oh, you go to Laney, oh, how cool is that? And I'm like, it's, it's great, but you really want to know? It, it, it's really, when I start spending more of my time dealing with outside issues, outside the classroom, something is broken. And so
Ten seconds.
It really would implore you to come by and how do we build trust and practice collegiality when this prioritated prioritization process is broken? Thank you.
Next we have Chris Wydenbach.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, I gotta ask for a mic check because I have, uh, history of all kinds of glitches at my house. Can you hear me all right? Okay, thank you. Um, wow. Boy, is there a theme emerging tonight. Um, if anyone's paying attention, I think they'll, I think they'll know what I mean by that. And, uh, I'm going to continue that theme. Um, the, the classified Senate report that ended with a quotation, uh, Terrence Fisher read that quotation. I missed which college that was, but talking about how, um, uh, I'm not, I'm not never crazy about, uh, using business models as, uh, um, analogy for education. But the idea that we exist to serve the customer, which in this case, it's not only our students, it's our whole community. And it's not just our existing students, the ones who have enrolled. It's the prospective students. We are not reaching what the recent environmental scan says is somewhere around thirty thousand adults whose education levels and income levels suggest that they would be greatly served by an educational pathway that leads quickly to, uh, some kind of work or might be a longer, a longer pathway, um, or both, that leads, that leads right into some medium. And then perhaps beyond. So I also see that in the OUSD dashboard, recent graduation, the numbers of graduates has actually grown in the last few years during COVID, uh, right before COVID and now. And the number of people not going to college in any form has ballooned. That's our failure. Those are our prospective students. We need to be reaching them. We need to be making it easy for them. It is not easy. My son goes to Oakland Tech. I hear it from tons of parents. They're like, we tried to enroll in the, some classes in Peralta and it was so confusing, we gave up. That's ridiculous. Uh, it, it's completely ridiculous to let that happen. Right now we're cutting FTF, cutting classes for, for this spring. In my department at Laney, the English Department, we're being cut two entire, uh, FTFs, which is, that, that basically means thirty units, okay? Um, compared to last spring. Why in the world, when enrollment is going up, would we not maintain or increase FTF? We gotta do better.
Next we have John Beam. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Beam. John, are you there?
Okay, how about now? There you go.
Yes.
Thank you, Sasha.
No problem.
Hi, I'm John Beam. I'm the Athletic Director at Laney College. And I want to thank President Rudy, Chancellor Jackson and the Board for continually supporting our student athletes. Throughout this trying time, as you've heard me say many times, our athletic program gives hope and opportunity to young people that we serve. As Donald talked about, the drop in FTS is throughout the colleges. Athletics has not dropped. In fact, we're still flourishing. As Donald talked about the drop in FTSs throughout the colleges, athletics has not dropped. In fact, we're still flourishing. Our numbers are high during the pandemic. Our students still came every day. Our coaches were there every day to make sure they were there to act as a buffer to all that was going around in the crazy world for our students so they could be successful. This board and these colleges have looked at, you know, making sure that things are done right. When we look at our fields and our track that our women and men use every day, they need to be upgraded and everybody knows it takes eight to ten years when it's time, where we're at that time now. Most colleges wait too long and then the fields become unsafe. We have two colleges right now in our leagues that cannot play at their schools because their fields are unsafe. This board has continued to put health and safety first, and I appreciate that you're doing that. When you look at the number of student athletes that we have that are continuing to be successful and transfer at a high rate, our rate is at eighty percent for the student athletes at Laney College that transfer or graduate to the next level. And we're able to keep them safe because of the facilities that we we are constantly making sure that provide the opportunity for them to showcase their talents. At this time, I would also like to think about, think for the board to think about, is it time to finally name our stadium after Bill Riley? Who has done so much champion for our student athletes and our community over the years. The other person I would think is Stan Peters to name the football field. So Stan was there for forty years with Academic Senate President. He's the one that brought me in. He mentored me when I was a high school coach at Skyline. And then the great Prover Jacobs, who have fought to make sure that when track was dropped at Laney, he fought to bring back women's track so that we could stay in Title IX compliance. Those three men need to be recognized. I think finding a way to name our facilities after them would be an appropriate way to go forward. Again, I just want to thank everybody for constantly thinking about the health and safety of our student athletes. And remember that we are their hope and opportunity. And this Friday, Saturday, after Thanksgiving, our football team will be playing in the state championship for the third time in five years. We're the first small school to ever do that, let alone once, but this is our third time. So I hope you all come out and our our students need to see you. They need to see that you care about them. Our community comes out every day, but I love to see faculty and staff to come out as well. Thank you very much and have a great holiday.
Next, we have Robert Crowley.
Hey, everybody. Uh, my name is Robert Crowley. I am the head uh Women's Track and Field Coach over at Laney College. So I wanted to start by thanking President Bessikoff, the Chancellor of the Board, everybody that's been involved uh with the talks and hopefully moving forward with the replacing our track. Our track is in desperate need of replacement, and I want to highlight that word replacement and not repair. Um, over the last couple of years, we've worked really hard to repair it at times. We've had a lot of damage done to the track itself, to our run rate, uh our runways, our pole vault pits. Uh, we were even displaced from practicing in the middle of our season last year because our track was so bad and we had to spend a lot of time repairing it. It's now time to replace our track. Um, we share our track with a number of community partners, including the Oakland Roots Outreach Programs. The Laney College track has been a beacon of joy for the Oakland community for a long time. If you talk to anybody that uh has run track in Oakland, that grew up in Oakland, they have memories running on the Laney College track and and because of the number of community partners that we share it with, it's accelerated the deterioration and the damage in our track greatly. Um, a new track is gonna better reinforce um you know, the the overuse, it's gonna better reinforce for all of our students, student athletes, the classes, the teams, everybody that uses the facility, which is a major facility at Laney College. Um, it's also gonna be a great way to just show our students and especially our our women students at Laney College that we are investing in them. Um, a lot of the time, you know, we get thrown to the side or not invested in as much. This is a great time to show them that we are a really important part of our athletic uh department, a really important part of our college and somebody that we want to invest in. I just want to give you guys an example. So last season, we had an All-State Thrower on our team. She was a, she finished third in the state in shot put in the entire state of California. She was representing Laney College with Laney across her chest at the biggest meet um in the state in front of thousands of people. She was also a top-five discus thrower um in Northern California, again, at the biggest meeting in Northern California, representing our college, representing our district. And she had to spend her entire sophomore season practicing on a grass field that had potholes in it covered in goose feces. Every time she gets done with practice, she has to go wash her hands. It was a major um health and safety hazard. By replacing our track, by hopefully getting to our grass field, again, we are investing in our in our students. Um, a new track is gonna show our students that we value and 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 invest in their safety and their well-being. And we got to remember that our students are the lifeblood of our college. We have our colleges, we have our district because of the students that we serve. Um, and with the number of community of partners that we have that use this facility, this beacon of joy for our community, um, I just want to thank everybody who's been a part of this process that really wants to invest in this. So thank you so much for your time. Um, look forward to seeing you all soon.
Next, we have Dylan Ochoa.
Uh, hello, everybody. My name is Dylan Ochoa. I'm currently a student athlete at Laney Co- at Laney College. Um, I would first like to say thank you to the President and the Board for allowing me to speak. Um, I uh in regards to the fields and all of our facilities, um, I would like to say how Laney College and the football team has helped me greatly. Um, and that it a new field would allow new prospects and new recruits and everybody to come in and be safe. And um, I would like to see that um we are allowed a safe place to be um played and uh we are allowed to all come together and play in a safe environment. That's all that I have for you today. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Emonte Scott.
Can everybody hear me? Um, hello, everybody. My name is Emonte Scott. I'm also a student athlete here currently at Laney College. Um, first, I would like to say thank you to everyone present um as long uh as well as anybody that has a hand in renovating our facilities here at Laney. Um, as Coach Beam said earlier, um COVID played a big role in my collegiate path as I was previously at Portland State. Um, COVID, you know, changed some things up for me and I came to Laney College seeking a different opportunity and another way to progress myself in academics. Um, with that being said, I've seen nothing but hard work and dedication from the staff members here at Laney College, but the only thing that's hindered our progression here is, like I said, the facilities given. Um, being at a university previously, um you know, the the field, the track and everything, everything was in top shape. And coming here, it's been, it's been new to kind of deal with the the obstacles we've been placed in front of us to kind of maneuver through those things and, you know, still find a way to get better in our craft. Um, so I would like to say that um anybody that does have a say in, you know, helping us get a new track and a new field, I would thank you for, you know, putting your best foot forward to getting us that so we can be the greatest we can be. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Noah Isip, I O S I O Seppa. I apologize if I did not pronounce that correctly.
Hi, yes, you did pronounce that correctly at the end. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Uh, good evening. My name is Noah Yosefa. I'm a student athlete and football player at Laney College. And I'm here to speak on behalf of uh my coaches and my teammates, as well as the other student uh athletes at Laney College. Um. First and foremost, I want to thank the Board and President Rudy, um, as well as the Chancellor for allowing me to speak. Um, it's a great opportunity to share what's been on student athletes' minds. Um. I think the improvement of the track and field is is it shows that it shows us that we're being valued as student athletes and I think that's something that um each and every single one of us um would like to feel that we have a place like Laney that's like a a second home to us and they're investing us in our future. Um. It'll also be good for um future student athletes who would love to to come in and and see what it's like to be a Laney Eagle and take pride in the fact that we have, you know, great facilities that are up kept and um people care about our safety and it's it's just nice to know that, you know, we feel valued. So I would really like to to express that point. Um. A little bit about my background, I'm from uh Lansing, Michigan, and I came to Laney uh for an opportunity to progress my academic and athletic career in football. Um, and Coach Beam and the rest of the coaching staff has been nothing but supportive. Um. And it is just, it's just a really great feeling to know that I have like a second home here. Um. But yeah, so yeah, thank you again for everybody for listening and uh that's all I have to say. Thank you again.
Next, we have Trishika Bennett.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to thank President Rudy, the Board, and the Chancellor for approving the replacement of the track and field at Laney College. I am um the Head Cross-Country Coach and an Assistant Coach for Track and Field at Laney College. And um, I I just want to share that um I'm very appreciative of the facilities that we currently have and that um with improvements that our student athletes would remain safe. Um, we do share our our space with a lot of uh with the community and we would love to continue to do that as well. And with the replacement of the track and the turf, um we would be able to continue to provide that space for our community and for our student athletes. And being able to provide them with the ability to excel and to be able to, you know, bring their their asked dreams and aspirations to fruition. So I just want to thank you all again um for the approval of moving forward with replacement of the track and the turf. And thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Next, we have Jada Joshua.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, you can.
Awesome. Uh, first, I want to thank President Rudy, the Board, and the Chancellor for approving the track replacement for Laney College. Um, a little background about me, I came from Modesto, um moved to Hayward and I wanted to see Laney. So uh first off, the people and the faculty are very awesome. I've met a lot of cool people, made a lot of uh awesome friendships here, and I really would like to see our track team flourish into something a little bit better. Um, I am on the field side of tracks, so I throw. Uh, we get a lot of like, like culture upset. We get a lot of um like goose poop and like holes in our field and I feel like with some turf, you know, some of the people on our field, it would really help our just our, I I I'll around dedication and just go to practice and be around all these like new things, you know, I mean, I think it would make people want to go to practice and feel like the school really appreciates them a little bit more. I know I would do that and I know it would do that for me. Um, so I think that's all I have to say and thank you again for the people who can get us new fields. Thank you.
Next and the last public speaker we have is Amir Almussawir.
Hello? Uh, yeah, my name is Amir. I'm sour. Uh, I'm a student athlete at Laney College and I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak and be heard. Um, little background for my college experience so far. Um, I started off at DVC and um I'd say DVC's field is a little bit better than ours and then I also moved to LMC and I would say the same. Um, and to piggyback off what Cody Beam said, uh the schools that were uh unable to play on their field because how bad the turf was, we just had a game uh last week against the bow where the turf was really rough, really hard, whatever. And um I fell down. I got really too too bad turf burns on my knees and our field is getting up to that point, it feels like. Because, you know, every time I hit the ground, every time someone hits the ground on our field, it's a it's a bad burn. Um, which takes a while to heal up. Um. I just want to thank you guys again for giving me the opportunity to speak and uh and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And that is all the public comments we have, President.
Thank you, Madam Board Clerk. Let's move on to four point twelve Chancellor's reports. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, President Reese, and greetings to our constituency groups, to our presidents, um, and also to the Board of Trustees. Um, this evening, I'm gonna start with Dr. Stacy Shears, who's sitting in for uh Dr. Angelica Garcia at Berkeley City College. And then we're gonna follow our traditional alphabetical forum, which would then be College of Alameda with Dr. Bajrami, Diana Bajrami, then Laney College, uh President Rudy Bessikoff, and then finally, and certainly not least, uh Dr. David Johnson. So, uh Dr. Shears, thank you for being here.
Good evening, President Napolea Belarice, Chancellor Jackson, Trustees, colleagues, and community members. I'm honored to present the oral remarks on behalf of BCC President Dr. Angelica Garcia. In addition to the written board report in your packet for tonight's meeting, I'd like to uh highlight a few items at Berkeley City College. First, we'd like to thank President Bessikoff, Director Amy Marshall, and the team at Laney College for hosting us all for November tenth charrette. It was truly amazing to see our community partners engage in our educational master plan. And our EMP Steering Committee will discuss our learnings from the charrette at our upcoming meeting November twenty second. I would also like to thank the EMP Steering Committee members Fatima Shah, Pumi Sayavong, and Student Rep Christian Klichev for attending the charrette. Additionally, a special thank you to Christine Trowbridge and Denalin Malari Malari for their work in staffing the BCC table at the event. Second, we learned this week that ACCJC released ACCJC On The Move, which highlights stories of student success and institutional transformation and features Berkeley City College. In the first release, ACC President uh Dr. Mac McPowell uh visited BCC in early August where he learned much about the college. The article highlights BCC's work uh with connecting with historically minoritized student communities via dual enrollment, the implementation of guided pathways, and work in closing equity gaps in the college's high transfer rates. Check out ACCJConthemove.org for the full article. And last, I'd like to share that President, BCC President Dr. Angelica Garcia is being honored at the Community College League of California convening this Friday as one of the five beacons of racial equity across the state. The Campaign for College Opportunity is hosting a reception this Friday from seven to nine in San Francisco. And the following excerpt captures uh some of the sentiments that validate Dr. Garcia's recognition. "Your courageous leadership and support for bold racial equity efforts such as more racially equitable hiring practices, intentional student service programming, and commitment to mentoring other leaders to ensure that more community college students will now be able to pursue a college degree and reach their dreams. We're proud of Dr. Garcia and celebrate this recognition as a testament to the work we're doing at Berkeley City College to create a more equitable and racially just community that serves students in our local community. I hope you'll join me in congratulating our colega and leader in this amazing recognition as beacon of racial equity." This concludes my remarks for Berkeley City College.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Napoli Belarice, Trustees, colleagues, Chancellor Jackson, and members of the community. I'll keep my report short today. And in addition to the written report that you have in front of you, I wanted to highlight two events. Collega's Conference was well-attended by College of Alameda faculty administrators and classified professionals. And College of Alameda Director Corona Lira and Director Benavides made us all proud because they they presented the success of COA Puente Summer Bridge Program in enhancing Puente student transition to community colleges. And talking about being COA proud, I would like to focus really briefly on the charrette last um week. And talking about being COA proud, I would like to focus really briefly on the Shiret last um week. A special thanks to COA team who represented COA, Professor Derek Piazza braced the cold morning to be present there at seven AM. To beautifully set up the COA table, uh and um also Acting Vice President Maurice Jones. Malik Shabaz, ASCO President Myers, Dean Jennings, Chung Hua Chang, Donna Jones, Mary Vic Lizarto. Met with community members to promote COA academic and student services. So it was really good to see um the table uh beaming with people, students. And community members. I also had the pleasure to co-lead the Career Pathways Focus Group with Dr. Wright from West Ed. And it felt really good to see the commitment of the entire community to support PCCD. As a great provider of workforce training crafted in collaboration with K twelve and P sixteen, adult education. Businesses and labor and taught by devoted educators and professionals. Special thanks to all the career education deans, Dean Amboy, Dean Jennings, Dean Lewis, and Dean Thomas. That made this session a successful one. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Napoli Belarice, members of the governing board, colleagues in education. And most of our our valued community members and our students. Uh I'd like to start my report this morning by actually, or this sa- this evening by uh following up on uh my colleagues. By saying that Laney was so honored to send um five of our colleagues to the Collegas Conference. As we continue to explore what it means to be a member of Haku, uh the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. And to meet the needs of our Latinx students and employees um in in their communications with us. This has been an exciting venture and yet one more bridge that Laney College is building with our community. Speaking of the community, we were so honored uh to host the Shiret last week. And so far this semester with the mayoral debates, welcoming Congresswoman Barbara Lee. And then, of course, last week's event, it really feels like Laney is the venue to be, and and we're so proud of that. Also, um you have a very detailed president's report tonight, and I just want to give a shout out to Janice Brown. To Katrina Santos, to Raya Zion, and Arlene Lontak, who, since we've kind of ta- taken this approach of. Uh, board report by committee, uh the stories of Laney that you now have are richer and that you have more of them. So I just wanted to say thank you to them for that. Uh, this is an exciting week with priority registration beginning, and um among our four colleges, our spring is free campaigns kicking off. And uh last week, I was so privileged to hold an office hour that was attended by the greater Laney community. And going into spring, we're gonna take a harder look at our tutoring services. And we're also going to take a look at those financial aid workshops that we're doing. This are really next two points that I always love to say we're chasing. As far as excellence goes. Uh, a lot has been going on, and we have a team at Laney that's getting ready to really get the word out, and I want to say thank you. Uh, not only to Vice Presidents Hall and Absada, but also to Katrina Santos, you hear her name again when it comes to communication now, she's a big piece. As well as Alani Gastas, uh just for their work um as we come together. Speaking of coming together uh with guided pathways, uh you'll be hearing soon about Laney Connect. A new initiative. We've been focusing a lot on our our classes and our catalog and what our offerings look like and our program tracks and what where they lead. This initiative is actually now going to bring paid internships eventually into guided pathways as a piece of the puzzle. And I want to thank Alani and Susan, uh uh Tim Rosavala, because they've really stepped up uh and really provided some leadership as it relates to this. And then finally tonight, I would like to thank the board for agreeing to close our proceedings tonight in the memory of Carlos Ferrer. Uh, he cert- he actually jo- first joined the Peralta District in nineteen eighty-five and served at COA and at Laney College. Uh, certainly was someone who was an enthusiast and a lover of students um in his role as a physical education attendant, took time to. Be a club sponsor for volleyball and for soccer along the way. Someone who was a lover of life and someone always to be seen every year, apparently in San Diego at Comic Con. And just uh really someone that, when people talked about him with me at Laney over the last two weeks. The smile was the one constant. So I thank the board for allowing us to close the meeting tonight in his honor, and with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you.
Well said, Rudy. Good evening, Chancellor, President Napoli Belarice, uh board members, community, and colleagues. So you have my report as well, uh which highlights uh the recent conference visits. Collegas was on our. We had the opportunity to send folks to Collegas as well, and also the uh emoji uh conference in Southern California. And you also heard um from our Classified Senate, talking about the strides we're making with the I E P I grant. And moving forward with classified uh professional development for our classified uh staff. So I'm gonna keep my comments very brief and just focus on. Um, just saying a word of congratulations to our very own Merritt College's very own Dr. Jennifer Shanasky for her. She didn't want me to jinx it, but her election to the Ber- Berkeley School Board. Um, you may know her as. A chemistry instructor at Merritt or the PFD president, but you can now add the title of elected official. So in asking her why she wanted to pursue this office, uh she shared that. Quote, I'm running for Berkeley's Berkeley School Board because I am passionate about public education and community service. And I feel so fortunate that my children have the have had the opportunity to have the stability and strength of Berkeley Schools, and she wanted to ensure that. The schools remain effective, inclusive, diverse, and dynamic for all students. So we're just gonna say from Merritt College, well done, Jennifer. And we wish you great success, and we know that you will bring the same great passion and commitment to your new post. That concludes my remarks for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Presidents. I'll turn it back over to the President of the Board.
Great. Thank you all. Let's move on to five point one presentation and approval of the twenty-two twenty-four parcel tax plan. Dr. Droker?
Good evening. Um, I'm really happy to be here with you tonight. The work I'm about to present to you is the work of our colleges um working to support Measure E. Which is a qualified special tax that is authorized to be used to support core academic programs in math, science, English, technology. And train students for careers and prepare students to transfer for four-year universities. Uh, the legislation requires that the colleges prepare two-year plans, and um we are now at that two-year mark. So this, these plans are for twenty-two twenty-four. Uh with that, I'm gonna um start the presentation. Sasha, would you load it for me? And so I'd like to uh welcome Dr. Cooney Hay, Dr. Maurice Jones, Dr. Becky Absada. And Dr. Dee Christertson, our Collective Vice President of Instruction, who will present the college plans tonight. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit about what we just mentioned. Um. The the goals for this year's Measure E supports districts' identified goals and student success. And um also, we want to make mention that the policy is in alignment with AP seventy sixty-seven forty-one, which delineates the goals. Uh, we do have the Citizens Oversight Committee on the Parcel Tax, and these plans were presented to them at their most recent meeting a couple of weeks ago. Next slide. And as I mentioned, these are the core academic programs, workforce preparation, and career job training and preparation for transfer. That are the goals of Measure. Next slide. So with that, I'll ask Dr. Cooney Hay to present Berkeley City College.
Good evening. Thank you, uh Dr. Droker. So for the two-year plan for twenty-two twenty-three, um um. Uh twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh twenty-two twenty-one, twenty-two twenty-three. Um, BCC is spending sixty percent of the instructional um funding from the Parcel Tax. And we are focusing on some of the uh institutional priorities. And then uh we spent um part-time faculty uh instructional funds to math, English, ESOL. Counseling and library library faculty. And this resulted in uh successful students who take college-level math and English and also ESOL. Um, and during the the first year, so we had a great success in doing so. And then we got recognized by the Ca- California Acceleration Project for strong implementation of AB seven oh five. So whatever the the funds that we um have the the uh pleasure of being able to support it by the Parcel Tax. We make sure that we make ourselves accountable to evaluate and reflect on how the outcomes have uh fared. So twenty-three twenty-four year, uh next year, we would like to expand support of other disciplines besides those that we just mentioned. That are responding to student and industry needs and demonstrating student success and decrease in achievement gap, and especially in the CE courses. That is our plan for next year. And in the student supports, uh support, uh it also supports Learning Resource Center, LRCs. And operational uh infrastructure to centralize the tutoring services. Um, we had the um tutoring success in supporting the student's success both online and face-to-face. As well as traditional tutoring and um embedded tutors um into classes, both both modalities. Next slide, please. And following. Programs and services utilize the Parcel Tax funds to support and support critical uh positions as well as services and activities. And we are also ensuring that we assess our progress um on those um uh the s- on the semester bases. So for the library, uh the next slide, please, I'm sorry. Those are the the um programs that we were just talking about. So for the library, library provides critical academic and uh student support for faculty students and staff both online and in person. And then supports the uh it the Parcel Tax supports a position, um that is the library technician too. Sciences, as you know, supports physical and biological sciences, and that are key requirement for degree attainment. Transfer and then the high-wage job security and supports a lab technician position as well. Student ambassadors and uh provides direct assistance to students, so Parcel Tax supports the uh student ambassadors. And then they apply um to the college enrolling class to help with the application process to the college enrolling in classes. Navigating all required technical steps successfully to set students um up for success. And then also this, the the ambassadors provide services at the welcome desk in person. And assist students with the BCC application and registration processes each semester. And also navigates uh navigate students through campus solutions to access their schedule, canvas to access courses, and connects to Ed. To connect key student services areas to ensure their s- uh uh success. Finally, counseling, um additional counseling hours will be provided to students with the support of the Parcel Tax. To help them better better understand certificate, degree, and transfer requirements. And then also in person and um be more counseling to support students in modality, um in a modality that they need. And then finally, part-time counselors at BCC will provide educational planning, uh prerequisite clearances. And academic advising to BCC students. So thank you very much for the support for this Parcel Tax, and this is our two-year plan for. Uh, the year up to twenty-two twenty-three. Thank you.
And um, Dr. Maurice Jones, please. Is Dr. Jones with us?
He's in the boardroom.
Oh. Vidya, um, I'll need to turn on his mic.
Yeah, there we are. Okay, well, first, it's not Dr. Jones said, it's Maurice. Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, trustees, uh Dr. Jackson. Uh, colleagues and uh members of our community. Uh, first, on behalf of the College of Alameda, I'd like to thank our taxpayers for their generosity. Uh, which will allow the college to continue to better serve our community. Uh, concerning College of Alameda's two-year Parcel Tax Plan proposal, uh in accordance with board policy and administrative procedures. College of Alameda will use the Parcel Tax funds to provide additional instruction and services in the areas as identified in Administrative Procedure six seven four one. With the majority um of the funds going toward direct instruction. Other funds will be used, or the funds, the remaining funds will be used to provide additional non-instructional support. Uh, which will include the development of holistic uh student success, success teams supported by classified professionals. And peer mentors, these teams will be the hub of integrated and wraparound services for students uh to improve student success. And with that, I conclude my uh presentation. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Becky. I'm the VPI at Laney. And our two-year Parcel Tax Plan, um this first slide is for this year, and the second slide is for next year, when we're gonna make a couple slight changes. Uh, if you look at this year, um you'll see that about fifteen percent of the total funds um will be going to support tutors. And tutoring, a new tutoring coordinator, uh classified staff position that we've just hired right now. Um, and that harkens back to what President Besikov was just saying about um feedback we received on how to improve Spring is Free. Um, so we are trying to integrate our tutoring uh more across the campus and expand it. Ten percent of the funds for this year will go to counseling, additional counseling hours. Um, five percent for instructional lab costs, um because we discovered that the supply budgets that we have have not kept up with inflation. And then seventy percent of the funding will go toward funding, um directly funding instruction. So that's for this year. If you switch to the next slide. And you'll see that for next year, um we are, just like COA just mentioned, in the process of building out success and retention teams. Uh, we're calling them student success teams. It's part of our guided pathways work, and we're in the process of hiring two new classified positions. Um, to help work with our different areas of interest um for our students. What we've discovered is that we um oftentimes, students get to college, get to Laney, and and they're kind of lost. And and they don't feel like they have a good point of contact, and um we're building out these success teams and and hopefully physical locations on campus. For the students to have a good point of contact and for us to be able to provide them um direct services. And there's more description of that in the board um packet, in the actual plan itself, if you're interested in reading. But the plan for next year is to take ten percent of the total Parcel Tax funds um and put them toward those success and retention positions. Um, and then spend sixty percent of the funds supporting instructional sections. Thank you.
And then Sasha, next slide. Denise?
Thank you, Dr. Droker. Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, Board President Napoli Belarice, members of the Board of Trustees, Presidents, colleagues, and Peralta community. I would also like to extend a sincere thank you to the taxpayers of our community for their invaluable support as we work to provide our students with the best. Possible educational experiences. Because of Parcel Tax funds, we are able to offer additional core curriculum courses. As well as high-demand CE sections. It is worthy of note that seventy percent of the college's FTS are generated by CE curriculum. Sixty-two percent of our Parcel Tax funds will support these offerings. Counseling needs at Merritt have increased beyond what we are budgeted to support. So Parcel Tax funds have also made a huge difference for students who now have less of a wait time. To see counselors who can provide them with the guidance that they need to successfully transfer to a four-year, to four-year institutions. Not to just any universities, but to ones that will best support them in fulfilling their educational goals. Twenty twelve point eighty-six percent of our Parcel Tax funding will be used for this purpose. At Merritt, we recognize that classified professionals are an integral force in our success. So due to the immense demand for administrative classified support in both instruction and student services. The budgeted expense within our other supporting costs has doubled over previous years. This category represents twenty-five point oh seven percent of our Parcel Tax budget. And includes funding for additional part-time librarians and student tutors who provide our students with invaluable academic support. Um, next slide, please. I think it's important to see the courses um that are actually included um in the Parcel Tax Plan. Um, particularly the um career education courses. Um, not only do these courses provide students with um exceptional support for the programs that they are. Um, that they're enrolled in, but these programs make a life-changing difference for many of our students. Um, after speaking with one. Um after speaking with one of our co-chairs of our Biosciences Department, uh Giselle Georgie, she shared with me that the um that the wage for histotax begins between eighty and ninety thousand dollars, and that's with one or two-year certificate. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that parcel tax dollars are making a huge difference, not only as students uh pursue their education, but as they prepare themselves for for life and for um earning a living wage. Thank you. That concludes my report from Merit College.
Thank you so much, um College Vice Presidents. I really appreciate your time tonight and and we'll open it up, Dr. Jackson, to any questions, and President Reese, as well as um just to make note that the district does receive just over eight million dollars for with parcel tax.
Thank you for that. Actually, trustee Withrow and I were just um talking about how there's such an investment in tutoring, and we are really excited to see that, whether it's the career coaches or tutoring for the guided pathways. Um and as embedded tutors, because as we know that that's that's such an important support that our students absolutely need. Um Vice President from Merit College, it was wonderful to actually see you delineate the courses in specific within CTE. And good for us to know, maybe we already should have known that seventy percent of the FTS of the colleges generated by CE curriculum, didn't realize that, so that was really fantastic to see here. So thank you all for the presentations. And the other thing that I just wanted to add is that this is the first year where I've actually seen the the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Parcel Tax meet five times. All of the previous years, it's been one, two, and I think when I first got here, there wasn't actually a website that documented when they were meeting, so um again, kudos to the leadership, because it's fantastic that they're meeting often, ensuring that we are doing right by the public monies, and also wonderful to see how it's being used every two years. So again, thank you all. We need to vote on this, correct?
Yes, you'll need to take action for the the four plans.
Okay, any other questions, trustees, or comments? As I cannot see you. Nothing? Okay, thank you. Um motion, please, then.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Delphine Polk.
Sure.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Roll call.
One. One second, I'm so sorry. I have fun mind. So don't trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to five point two, presentation of the Peralta Community College District's initial proposal for collective bargaining agreement with PFT for successor agreement for twenty-two, twenty-five. Dr. McKinley?
Uh, thank you, President Reese. Uh, good evening, and then Chancellor Jackson, the Board of Trustees, colleagues, and guests. Uh pursuant to California Code, Section thirty-five, forty-seven, and in accordance with our current collective bargaining agreement with the Peralta Federation of Teachers, the district is um uh sunshining or presenting an additional item for uh for the negotiation, which is Article twenty, Section five F, a notice of investigation where the the district has an interest in addressing employee privacy rights related to the distribution of investigative reports. And i- in the uh district also retains its right to add, amend, delete, change any of our of our proposals. Uh the current proposals or any new ones in the future. And then also in pursuant to the Government Code, Section thirty-five, forty-seven, uh there will be a public hearing for the public to have an opportunity to find on this particular um article that we're sunshining, and that would be in the next board meeting on December thirteenth. And that concludes uh my presentation. President Reese.
Thank you, Dr. McKinley.
Okay.
All right, let's move to the consent calendar. May I have a motion?
So moved approval of all consent calendar items.
Okay, thank you, trustee Withrow. A second for that motion? A second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you, trustee Jenkins. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And let's move on to eleven point one, Consider Adoption Resolution Number twenty-one slash twenty-two hyphen fifty-one for District Brown Act-covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference per California Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, three.
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Uh Chancellor?
Yes, um I would like to have our um in-house counsel, um Royal Roberts, to address this issue in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. This item is outlined, Assembly Bill three sixty-one. This is for the board to continue uh for the next thirty days, meeting uh virtually. Uh however, the chancellor would also um like to recommend to the board um that the board um come back in full um in-person, starting on January tenth, along with the entire um district returning to in-person on January third. So that is a recommendation from the chancellor.
Great. And do we have to do the motion over now that we've gotten that specific recommendation related to eleven point one?
Yes, and and that does not um okay, I didn't know if my microphone was on or not.
Now we get.
That does not override the meeting confer that still needs to happen, um but that is the recommendation. Um I've done a survey of our Bay Ten. The board asked me to do that. And I believe almost all of the other Bay Ten colleges are have moved forward. Some started back in December of of twenty-twenty-one. Um others have come back from a hybrid mode uh to be more face-to-face this fall. And so it would be um I think incumbent upon us to for the board to make that decision so we can move forward and that our employees can make um whatever actions they need to take for us to move forward with that. Um as everyone know, the Governor Newsom announced that the COVID pandemic that all elected officials will be moving back face-to-face uh February twenty twenty-three?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth of February. And so it's recommended that we start to move forward in that direction also. And so that is the recommendation um from me and the staff.
Thank you. So we have a motion from?
Will accept, the maker of the motion will accept the recommendation to the to apply to it in an overall sense.
Okay.
Whenever I'm not gonna get down the line.
Um and trustee Jenkins, do you accept the friendly modification addition?
I do, President Reese.
Okay, discussion from any of our members, any of the trustees? Being none, legal counsel Royal? All right, let's do roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And let's move to eleven point two, Consider Appointment of Member to the Parcel Tax Measure Oversight Committee. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, as um the board has realized in the last year, really last eighteen months, um we've really, I've really gone out and looked for individuals to be on the parcel tax committee, and I think you see that the members that are part of that have uh been diligent working with the district. Uh and they are concerned citizens from various backgrounds. Uh one individual who was our president um was a part-time adjunct counselor. And as such, um has taken on um positions as an adjunct this coming year, and so we had to go out and recruit additional individuals. We still are looking for one more. Um so looking at the background of the candidate who is recommended by our legal counsel, so um I I really appreciate that uh assistance. And so I'd like to move forward his name for approval to that committee.
And his name is William Higgs?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we're on Board of Trustees report. Trustee Hogan? Student trustee, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, uh student trustee Latino?
She's not here. It's a nice meeting.
Okay, trustee Withrow?
I'll pass.
Um trustee Jenkins?
Thank you so much, Madam President. Uh trustee Handy and I just returned back from the Black California Association of Black School Educators Conference, um using education as reparations for black students. It was a wonderful conference. We got to um hear from we had, we got to hear from speakers from the California Community Colleges linking with the linkage between K- Twelve and um Community College. And I want to impress on the district to continue pursuing dual enrollment as an efforts to boost our student enrollment. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, trustee Handy?
Uh, yes. Um, we had an exceptional time at Cabsy. It's one of the best conferences that um I've ever attended. It's jam-packed with um educators from across the country who bring um their best practices to share with um all the black educators and and it's it's extremely helpful. It was interesting to hear um Donald Moore comment because uh on on concurrent enrollment, dual enrollment, because this is something that I feel is our key to survival for Peralta. Other colleges are doing it on a regular basis. Compton is is sustaining itself with concurrent enrollment. I know that we have some success with it. But looking at um the fact that we're down to eleven thousand students, there are students that may or may not come back, but we need to be focusing on middle college concurrent enrollment, high school students who we can be bringing in at the same time that they're complete, that they are in their high school courses. There were so many sessions that were um they are showing the successes that colleges are having in getting their enrollments up through this. The thing that's most important is that the colleges understand what that process is as well as the high school, so that they're just not throwing something together. Having a student coming over to our colleges for two years, taking classes just to find out that none of those classes are transferable. There are many organizations that specialize in this, and I think that Peralta should be folk, it should be in, really should be a high priority, because I think our survival is dependent upon it. And I would suggest that all of you who are really interested in this topic, look at the Cabsy, that's California Association of Black School Educators Conferences for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Look at the presenters. Some of them have been Compton College. Um Daisy Gonzalez was our keynote speaker from California um Community College League. Um actually, I mean, she's the interim state chancellor. This is how imperative it is that we really learn and understand how this can work for us and how beneficial it is to our students and our community. Um, this is actually my last board meeting with you before um the the change over. And my hope is to work diligently on concurrent enrollment in the communities to recruit students and to help them to understand how they can become a part of the college while they're still in high school. And I believe by doing that, the students will know that there is a place for them at the table, and we won't have to go out and wonder, you know, where they are, but they will actually be coming to us. Um, another thing I want to talk about is I'm really um glad that we are moving forward to getting the Laney field fixed. This is something that is so important that we should not be um quibbling here and there about it, apples and oranges mixing things. That field brings us students. Coach Peters, Dr. Riley, John Beam, they have seen athletics as a pathway out of poverty. Many of our students that we have, many that break up that eleven thousand are athletes. And we must prioritize, as the students have told you today, how important it is for them to have the fields that they can actually utilize. It was unfortunate a couple of years ago when the Oakland A's gave us an offer to pay us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just utilize the field as a community partner, just as the soccer teams and others that we have used that that utilize our field. Some pay and some don't. And the college rejected that. That what money would have paid for half of the fills. Keep that in mind. We made a determination when we rejected that money that we could have used that we were going to use our own funds to do it. It doesn't have, it doesn't take away from anything else. This is an annual thing that must happen. Every ten years or so, we have to renew the fields to keep them safe. There's only one time Dr. Riley and I ever fought, and that was about the Fields House, because I really didn't understand the importance of it or the importance of expanding the um the football field. After learning about that and after us moving through and doing that, we've been able to have our community come in. We've had, what, one championships? We've been able to use our fields for our graduations. It's all student-centered, and it's all important. And I really ask you all, let's always keep that student voice and what's best for them right in the forefront. Um the other thing I want to say, too, is I've heard some comments about um things that are not going on, going right with the campus and stuff, and I just want to give a shout out to DGS and to HBLE for turning around twenty-five years of old projects in just a short time. These folks have been working diligently for the past year and a half. Many of them, their departments are down six or more. Before we go out and we do this fear, at what I call the fear acronym, false evidence appearing real, I think it's important that we all make sure that we understand the process. It's just like the chancellor explained to you to you today about the boilers and how it is a process that we're moving forward towards. Our hands may be tied for a minute, but it won't continue to be in that that way. And let's not slam each other, because people are working very, very hard, short-staffed to keep everything together. And I'm hoping everyone else is working just as hard in those classrooms to make students know that they are loved, they're welcomed, and that they're the reason that we're there. So again, I implore you to look at the Cabsy website, to look at what educators across the countries are doing to re-retain student enrollment, to make our campuses a welcoming um environment for our students, and also to replicate best practices. We don't need to go out and reinvent the wheel. It's been invented for us. We just need to keep our focus on the prize, and the prize is always our students. Thank you.
Vice President Delphine Polk?
That's a tough one to follow, trustee Handy. Um, really quickly, um I'm looking forward to seeing some of my colleagues at the CCLC um this weekend in South San Francisco. I think trustee Handy are going to be there as well. Um and so I look forward to reporting back at our next next meeting. Um I also um want to let everybody know that I will be having office hours this month, but it will be the fourth month, the fourth Wednesday um at the usual time of five-thirty, um but it will be conducted via Zoom. Um just because it's really cold outside. And I want to be mindful of folks um COVID and other sickness concerns, and so um I will be posting that information on my Twitter account um very shortly. So looking forward to having uh good conversations with folks. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um I would just say that I attended the charrette, and it was such an incredible. Thank you for that. I would just say that I attended the charrette, and it was such an incredible and wonderful opportunity. As I had said, and I affirm what many people have said already, we got to do this more often, just having all the stakeholders come and having these conversations and having candid, frank conversations with students, administrators, trustees. Everybody was involved. It was really pretty amazing, and it was just such a wonderful learning space. I had the opportunity to meet a few people that I have got to say their names, because they were really amazing to talk to and hear from. Jonathan Sullivan, one of the students, Tahida, Mildred Lewis, Jamila, Tim Thomas, of course, Margie Rubio. Am I getting the names correct? If I missed anyone, I apologize. But there was something that was said at the Public Safety meeting or session that I went to, that I'm going to repeat here, and I'm going to paraphrase incorrectly probably, but I think the gist or the essence was that as all of the people were articulating their opinions and ideas, somebody had called out, and I think it was Dean Mildred Lewis, that said that we're, we're talking at each other and we're, we have to figure out those spaces in which we're not actually communicating. And those are the things where I think solutions, creative solutions really emerge and spring forth when we acknowledge that we are, we're having these conversations and we're talking at each other and we have our concerns and our issues, but when we figure out that we have these spaces where we're not listening, or we have commonalities and we don't realize your commonalities, when we acknowledge that, true, real conversations and a pathway forward emerge. So I have to say that I'm so glad I went. I wish I went to two sessions, but I only went to one. And let's do more of that, because we need to do a lot more listening to one another. We need more collaboration. We need to remember that even though it seems like people aren't listening, it's because we've had these gaps in these spaces. What I saw in that room was candidness, generosity of spirit, a collab, a desire to kind of collaboratively move forward. And I think sometimes in the everyday, when we forget that we're actually all kind of committed to the same thing, but we don't quite get there, we just have to remember that, you know, we're all kind of trudging along and a generosity of spirit and an appreciation, but also a realization that, yeah, we all want to move forward more quickly, but sometimes doesn't happen as quickly. Anyhow, thank you for the charrette. Thank you for all and all that you did. And thank you for the people that I met in that room. I learned a lot. Board announcement, after or before the closing in honor of Mr. Ferrer. I don't remember the protocol. Okay, so Vice President Delphine Polk, I'm going to hand that over to you.
Okay. Great. Number one announcements, enroll now for online winter intercession classes from College of Alameda. Complete three units in only three weeks, starting December nineteenth. You can visit alameda.edu for more information and to enroll. Spring is free at the Peralta Colleges. That's exciting. Course fees are waived for California residents at all four campuses. Enrollment for spring twenty-twenty-three opens on November twenty-first. For more information, visit peralta.edu. Merit College is hosting an enrollment event on Friday, November eighteenth, from nine-thirty a.m. to three p.m. Visit us at Merit to get help enrolling, get your questions about financial aid and student support services answered. The Peralta Community College District will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November twenty-fourth and Friday, November twenty-fifth. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I'm just going to hand it over to President Besikov to close the meeting.
Thank you, President Napoli Belarice. Just reflecting about Carlos Ferrer and the fact that his service to the Peralta Community College District goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-five. I think one of the gifts that we've all been given with careers in education is that we touch the lives of others. We impact others. And in so many ways, our spirit lives on in the people we touch, whether it's our students, our colleagues, each other. And I think just, again, having heard so much about Mr. Ferrero over the last couple of weeks, this is someone who touched a lot of lives, so I would request that the board adjourn tonight in his honor.
Thank you. With that, good night, everyone. Be safe, be well, and we will see you in a couple of weeks. Happy Thanksgiving.